Today is Tuesday, November 10th. This is a regular monthly meeting of the Austin City Planning Commission. Looks like we have an open public hearing, a signed appeal, and a discussion on interim use permits on the agenda. Before we get to that, does everybody on the commission have a copy of the minutes from the Tuesday, September 15th meeting? If so, are there any corrections or changes? I do see one under members present. It's got Troy Lutz, so maybe, that's the only thing I noticed.[43.01][43.01](laughter) Maybe make that correction, Troy Nelson. Anything else? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes. So, a motion to approve by Bremer, second?
Second by Commissioner Minow.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Well, the first item on our agenda is an open public hearing to consider a request from Todd Robertson, 2208 South Broadway, Rochester, Minnesota, to amend an existing conditional use permit to allow motor vehicle repair on his property located at 201 First Avenue Southwest, Austin, Minnesota. The property is located in a B2 community business district. This action is pursuant to Austin City Code 11.56 subdivision 3A, 11.56 subdivision 3A.
Yes, this is an existing conditional use permit. The existing conditions were developed in 2008 when the original request was, the original application was made. The application is requesting a change that's not, I don't think, in my opinion, a great deal different than what the current use is. However, the original conditional use permit specifically stated that auto repair was not part of the conditional use, so I asked them to bring this application to amend the conditional use permit. The intended use now would be to make the area an auto repair or auto service shop. So, the council, or the planning commission would have to go through the same conditions or same requirements, same analysis that they do for an initial conditional use permit. The planning commission should look at the effect of the proposed use upon the health, safety, and general welfare of the occupants of the surrounding land, including land values as well as the preservation of natural features. Among other things, the planning commission should look at the use, ensure that the use will not create an excessive burden on existing facilities in the area. This is a commercial area, it's a B2 area. To the north is a B3, which is also business. To the south is some residential, however, immediately to the south is a B2 although there's a residential property there. And then, so there's no adjacent residential near that property. So, this should not create any additional burdens that would be a concern. The use would be sufficiently compatible or separated by distances or screening from adjacent agricultural residentially zoned or used land. As I said, the, there's no adjacent residential land although there's some existing on the block to the south. That area could be screened off with some fencing, and the original conditional use permit did require some fencing that it doesn't look like was actually put up at the time. The use would be sufficiently compatible, or never mind, that's a duplicate. The use, in the opinion of the planning commission, is reasonably related to the overall needs of the city and to the existing land use. Again, the proposed use is similar to other uses on First Avenue Southwest and the community, and in the community business district. The structure and site shall have an appearance that will not have an adverse effect upon the adjacent properties. The property looks like it's in pretty good condition. There could be some, again, some screening as was required in the addition of the original conditional use permit. And it's just, I think it's been empty for a little while. But those things can be remedied by the person who's occupying the property, keeping it in good shape with their building and landscape maintenance. The use should be consistent with our zoning chapter and to the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. And this is a conditional use which is allowed in this primarily commercial district. The use should not cause a traffic hazard or congestion, and I have not heard of anything. Of course, it's not been used for that particular purpose at this point, but there should not be any cause for problems there, too. There's an ingress and egress, as you can see, from the included parking layout and the, to main thoroughfares. The existing businesses nearby should not be adversely affected because of curtailment of customer trade brought about by intrusion of noise, glare, or general unsightliness. The repair work, to my understanding, would generally take place inside the building. And Mr. Favre is here as a representative of Mr. Robertson, the property owner. There is also a busy street there which creates some noise during the daytime as well. There may be some adjustment to the business hours to accommodate any concerns in that area. The surrounding properties in that area are, let's see. This is the subject property on this page. The property over here is Napa, which is an auto parts, which is convenient. In this area is the Plunkets Building. Over here, I believe these are some rental properties to the north. And then, this may or may not be rental property, but-
That's a group home of-
This is a group home there, okay. And then down here is a residential property. The other things that may be considered are the geographical area involved, whether the use would depreciate the surrounding area, the character of the surrounding area, the demonstrated need for such use, and whether it would cause some unusual hazards to life or property in the neighborhood. The petitioner, Todd Robinson, Robertson, owns the property and wishes to lease it to an individual, I believe lease, not buy, not selling?
Buy.
Leasing, not selling, to the, okay. He wants to lease the property to an individual who would like to have a vehicle repair shop in that area. The current conditional use permit is as follows. Hard surfacing is required for off-street parking and sales area, and there is hard surfacing there now. Six-foot-high solid fence was required on the south side to screen the residential property. That had not been done since the last application. The office area was supposed to be limited to auto sales and cleanup, and that's why I asked that they do an amendment to this conditional use permit for that specific purpose. The business hours are detailed out. I believe that the petitioner would like to change those business hours, and I'll let him discuss that with the planning commission. Fourteen cars were maximum allowed on the lot. It does look like there's room for fourteen vehicles. Two of those spots would have to be for customer parking, one also for accessibility, or accessible parking stall, and the rest could be for whatever use they needed those spots for. The lighting was supposed to be installed in a downward angle. I don't know that there was any additional lighting installed on that property. And then I just asked that if there were any building, or any improvements that they be made according to the city building official determinations, and that they obtain any necessary licensing. Do you have any questions for me?
Just, you know, we're talking about residential. That is a group home to the west. To me, that's a residence. Why don't we require a screening fence along there?
Because it's zoned commercial. It's a residence in a commercial zone.
Residence in a commercial-
Yep.
Does this require any notices to go out to anybody, the neighbors or-
Yeah, that's a good question, yeah. I actually, this did require notices to go out to all surrounding properties within a 350-foot radius of that property, and I have not received any calls.
What is, what's the issue with not having fulfilled the fence requirement before?
I don't know. I'm not sure.
You don't have anybody who checks those things after the fact?
No. You know, and I'm not, I'm not sure why, you know, why it was requested, and apparently no one complained if it wasn't followed through. But no, we typically, you know, unless it's something very obvious or health, safety concern, or something that we, you know, drove by and was visible, I wouldn't necessarily know that there was supposed to be a fence on that property.
So, the petitioner is in agreement with all of the requirements then? You know, including the fence and all of the things specified?
I don't know that, I think there is, I think that, my understanding, I'll let Charlie, I'll let Charlie speak to that, actually.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Charlie Favre, 609 West Oakland Avenue.
Thank you.
The, the reason that the original request did not have auto repair on it was that the original request was very specific for what he wanted, and he only operated four days a week, and it was strictly used cars, and he, it didn't have reason. That's why the auto repair wasn't in there. I was a little surprised it wasn't in there when I, in fact, kind of took me off guard we thought that it was. The, the fence that you speak of, the fence to the south on the south side, at that time, I have no idea why that was asked for. That was a commercial property to the south that was operated, it was an antique store, and then after that, it was a group home. Today, I think it's been turned back into a single-family or a multi-whatever.
It's, I happen to know it's a single-family home now, owner occupied, and I think their opinion would be that having that particular business vacant causes them more distress than if there were some auto repair happening.
They really want to have it occupied. They do, yes. I know that. The, sometimes fencing's caused more eyesore than they cause, than they do good, because the minute that you get that up there and you get a nice white fence, and then kids want to paint on it, and/or it doesn't get trimmed underneath, and there really is no problem on that that I see of having, that needs a fence there. And it is, both properties are zoned B2, so there's no, it isn't like you're going from a B to an R zoning. It is B2, and the property right next door is actually a vacant lot. So, it happens to belong to the next people, but there's, there is a vacant lot in between. Hours of doing business. He needs to be able to be there early enough so that people can leave their automobiles there to be repaired during the day, and late enough so that people can pick up their automobiles after they are repaired. So, we're seeing that it needs to be 6:30 in the morning till 6:30 at night. Whether he wants to operate quite that long or not, that's up to him. But he really needs that flexibility to be able to do that. The office, of course, needs to be used also for repair shop office. I don't have any idea why there would be, I don't know, I don't know what the difference is in that, you know, so, but I, I don't know what other, any other questions that you would have of me?
What about the Saturday hours? You'd mentioned that he wants 6:30 to 6:30, what would the Saturday hours be?
I believe 6:30 to 6:30.
All six days?
Six days a week, yeah.
Six days.
Any other questions this time?
And I would just comment from a staff perspective. These are the, the conditional use, uses that you, conditions of the conditional use permit that we just went through. Whether there's a fence there or not, I haven't heard anything from the neighboring property owners for or against that, or whether they knew of these conditions or not, they still never called to express any concerns about this particular project and the business hours as well. Yeah, I don't know for sure. I would leave that, I guess, to Charlie's opinion as to what they would need for, for that purpose. It seems reasonable for that area. I think most of the businesses are open from, you know, around that time period, Saturday maybe, I don't know, but, but I'll leave it to you to determine what would be appropriate.
Whatever motion is made, though, should probably include reference to the requirements. I think that we want to specify that.
Yeah, I would just, I would go ahead and list all the requirements so that we have them in the minutes.
You have an additional condition on there as well, Holly, for making building code improvements? Can you expand on that?
I did not know if there was a reason why, and we haven't been in there to look at the property, and I, maybe Charlie can speak to this as well, but the, the use of the building, I was not certain whether there needed to be any changes or updates to the building with regard to the use change from auto sales to auto repair.
Oh, I understand what you, I-
So, I just, I put that in there just to make sure that if there was any issue-
The building was originally built as a gas station, repair shop, gas station, 1950s. It, that's what it was built for. It was, it was built for what this gentleman wants to use it for, other than he's not going to disperse petroleum products, you know. So, the building is what it is. He, in anything that he would do in the, in the line of repairs, he has to get a building permit to do that. Consequently, I think that that particular point takes care of itself because the building inspector would be responsible to make sure that those, to make sure that what he's doing in there as far as changing things would be according to code. I don't see a, but, I don't see a reason for something additional there, but I-
So, Holly, do you think that the staff recommendation was made so that even if he doesn't actually do any physical changes to the building, the city gets a chance to get in and make sure the wiring's up to code and so forth? Is that the intention?
Yeah, we don't do the electrical inspection, but yes, that was my intention.
So, so even if he doesn't pull a building permit for some sort of project, that the city gets a chance to go in and, and check over for safety issues?
Correct, and, and it's up to the planning commission whether you would like to add that condition or not add that condition.
The building is in pretty nice shape. It's, in, structurally, it's, it's a good building. He does have to do some minor- Remodel, because it's a two-stall, it's a, it's a, it was a two-stall service garage, of which one stall was, the door was taken out and closed up, and a small office built behind that door. Well, he needs two stalls, so the door has to be opened up and the small office has to be taken out. Consequently, he has to pull a permit for that, and he also will have some electrical that has to be done. So, there will be an electrical inspection, and the, the state inspector will get involved in that, by the nature of what he has to do.
Okay.
That's it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit under the conditions of the hard surfacing is, remains in place for off-street parking and sales. A six-foot-high solid fence is, on the south side of the property, is installed. The office area can be used for mechanical repair and office area. Business hours are allowed from 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., Monday through Saturday. Maximum of fourteen cars allowed on the lot, and any lighting be installed at a downward angle.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Minow to approve with the specified conditions. Second, by Commissioner Bremer. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, our second item on the agenda is a sign appeal to request, to consider a request from the Hormel Historic Home regarding the denial of a sign permit, Austin City Code, section 4.50 subdivision 4, B3, limits placement of signs prohibiting, prohibiting signs on rocks, fences, or trees as a general requirement in all districts. Petitioners requesting that they be allowed to attach a sign to their fence facing the public right of way.
As you noted, this is a petition from Hormel Historic Home. This is in a B3 central business district. This is described as a historic landmark and event center. The petitioner has a picture that they included of the sign as it would be displayed, or as is displayed on the fence. They are trying to effectively direct their visitors while minimizing the, the impact on the, their, this historic landmark. Some of the things that you need to consider is that the sign request is due to unusual conditions pertaining to the needs of a specific building or lot. I think this meets that requirement due to the unique nature of the building and the site. The sign would not create a hazard, does not have, that's not an issue. The sign would not violate Minnesota statute or rules or regulations, which is not an issue. Sign would not be objectional, objectionable to adjacent property owners. I have not had any objections. The sign would not adversely affect residential property. The sign would be in keeping with the general character of the surrounding area, which it, everything looks really beautiful in this picture. The addition, in addition, following findings are required for all types of variances, that the variance is in harmony with the general purpose, purposes and intent of the zoning code. I think that, that applies in this instance. The variance is consistent with our comprehensive plan, which is more on a land use than a sign, sign issue. The applicant has established that there are practical difficulties in complying with the provision, and that the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by the provision. The property owner is trying to minimize the addition of things that are not original to the property and to minimize any clutter that might be, I guess, might develop as an, as a need for having directional information for visitors. The plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property, and the variance will not permit any use that is not allowed in the zoning district where the affected land is located, and the variance will not alter the essential character of the surrounding area. Do you have any questions about this variance request?
I have some concerns. I went by yesterday, today and looked at it, and I understand part of what's happening is there's a sign on the tree which they have to remove and put on a post, which is beside the sidewalk walking up to the house. I think it's a shame they have to do that, but if that's the way we have to tell them to do things, I guess, and we can't get around it, sounding like talking-
Yeah, and that issue's not before the planning commission right now?
Right, I realize that, but the, the issue of that sign on the fence, I feel it's not really worth much to them on the fence. And the only reason it's on the fence, from my understanding, talking with them yesterday, is the city wouldn't allow them to put it on a post.
Um, we did come up with a configuration that would allow everything to be code compliant. We just, I think there was just a disagreement about, it could be, they could do whatever they wanted and make it code compliant, it would just, it would have to be on a post, and they would all have to be on the same post, essentially.
Yeah, but that would-
And I don't have all those materials in front of me.
That wouldn't be beneficial, from what I can see, because what they're trying to do, the one that's on the tree is identifying the home, and it's, you know, it's a nice sign and identify-
And there's a, there was a post there also originally that's now been removed, so that could have been put on the post that was existing in that area.
All right, so we'll ignore that one, but this one is designed to direct people into that part of the facility. And being down so low, I don't, I don't say that it's worth much.
Okay.
I wouldn't notice it if I was walking down the street, and, you know, most of the time you're not looking down low like that, you're looking up ahead of you, and so I think it ought to be on a post. Now, if we make them put the one on a post, I don't have a problem with that, but let's let them put this one on a post.
And you can, you can analyze the variance and, and determine that it's not appropriate for this particular, this particular sign, if, if that is how you feel.
Why would you think it's not appropriate for them?
I'm just saying that's your, that's your opinion, it sounds like.
Well, yeah, but I'm just wondering why you don't think?
I think it's, I think it's, this would require variance. Otherwise, I, you know, I would have to look at the prior permit that they brought in, what we talked about with precision signs, to refresh my memory as to what the original plan that we agreed upon was. Something happened between that original permit and what happened at the site. I don't know the entire story, but now we have a sign on a tree and we have a sign on a fence. The sign on the tree, our ordinance does not allow us-
So, they're going to move it to a post?
-to do a variance on. This sign on the fence, there is a possibility of having a variance if the planning commission finds that those requirements are met.
Could the variance allow it to be on a post?
I would have to look at the requirements. It depends on how-
Since we're creating the variance, we could, we could say that? Since we're creating the variance, we can define that?
You could have conditions on the variance. You could say you can have, but the variance is related to putting on a fence, not on a post, so, Craig, do you have any?
Yeah, any input from the advisor?
I'd have to tell you that I'd have to look at the maximum number of standalone signs per property, but I believe that would, that's the issue. If you put it on one post, you can have multiple signs as long as they fall within the size limitation, because you have one sign. What they want to do, as you've pointed out, is they want to have one sign towards the historic home for people who want to take tours or come to tea at that location, and another sign by the, by the reception hall for people who are coming for larger events to make sure people don't get confused. So, the single standalone sign wouldn't serve their purposes. If they wanted to have two standalone signs, they would ask for a variance on the number of standalone signs, and we'd be back here considering a different variance. What they've asked for is this variance so that they can put it on the fence, for whatever reason, they've judged that to be the preferential location as, as an alternative.
And I believe they-
I understand, talking with the director today, they were told they couldn't put a post up, so that's why they put it on the fence. So, somewhere there's some miscommunication going on that we need to figure out, and I just think maybe-
Well, I could certainly let Ms. Johnson speak if she wants to.
Then maybe we could go for a variance for a post.
Thank you.
Hi. State your name and address for the record, please.
Holly Johnson, representing 208 Fourth Avenue Northwest in Austin.
Thank you.
The, little background on this, the whole reason we wanted to do these signs is because we have tour guests that walk in through the garden, find themselves in the banquet hall, and have no idea where to go. So, then they're walking around back there, and we don't know that they're in the property. So, we wanted to put up signs to say, "Tours and Office, enter here. Peace Garden and Event Center, enter here." So, there were various discussions, and I'll admit, I had no idea, there were so many, you know, sign regulations, so that's my ignorance, but I've learned quite a bit, thanks to Holly. And I don't know if you want, the, yes, we can only have one sign on a pole, and so that's why we decided to put it on the fence, and the permit was originally for a pole through various- Through various communication errors, it ended up going on the fence, and then we were told we could apply for a variance to go there. It may not be seem super visible to you, but when people are coming to an event, and it says Peace Garden and Event Center, most likely, we hope that they would choose if they're going to an event in the event center to come in there. If they're coming there, they're going to be looking for signs. We can sit in our office and watch people on the sidewalk looking around going, "Where do we go? Where do we go?" So that's why we chose this, to put it in the places we were, whether it be a pole, a tree, or a fence, those were the locations we wanted them to go. We also feel that with the Spam Museum traffic coming up, people will be walking that direction, we hope, from the Spam Museum to our location, and will then hopefully see that sign as they look for an entrance and say, "It says Event Center. That's probably not where we want to go. We'll go to the house." So, perfect or not, that was our rationale for putting the new signage there.
And I know Ms. Johnson has had to run this through her board, in that they've had a number of, I think, inputs on what has ultimately come to the planning commission.
Right.
So what you're asking us to to consider tonight is leaving the sign on the fence?
Yes, that's-
You're happy with happy enough with leaving it there?
Oh, yeah. Actually, personally, we think it looks better than on a pole. When we were considering the pole, and it was, once we looked at the options, we actually thought it looked better on the, it didn't detect from the gardening that's there, the roses that are there, so we felt it looked better, but.
Mr. Byram, could you speak to the the spirit behind the ordinance with signs on fences?
What I can say is that the fact that the ordinance precludes signs on fences means that at some point in time, there was a legislative decision by the city council that the public policy of Austin should be to shy away from signs on fences. Generally, signs are affixed to the building, or they are limited to one pole sign per property, and the idea is to sort of limit the amount of visual clutter in the neighborhood. I think the concern about fences is that sometimes that puts it way up by the right-of-way instead of on the building, and that might be visually less appealing. I'm not saying that's true in this particular case, but if I had to guess what the public policy was behind this, it was to avoid a lot of clutter, or fences getting filled up with signs, or, you know, a difficult time in in limiting the size and location and number of signs. So now, signs on fences have to come to you. You look at them, you decide whether it clutters up the area or not. I think that it's important, just for the record here, to note that the content of the sign is not under review. There's First Amendment problems with that, so this is really just a clutter, visual sort of, is it going to cause problems? Is it going to generally be unattractive? It's up to the landowner, really, to put the content in there.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment. I think, you know, personally, I like it on the fence, and really, it's not the planning commission's responsibility to determine whether it's effective, or is primarily to determine that it's it's not detracting from public. And in this case, they've gone through a lot of hassle and decision-making. They like it on the fence. I don't see it as objectionable, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve the variance.
One second. Okay. We have a motion to approve the sign appeal.
Procedurally, are we making a recommendation to the city council, or are we?
That's correct. Actually, you-
Okay.
I recommend that we approve, I recommend that the city council approve the sign variance as requested.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the sign appeal. Our recommendation to the council from Commissioner Minot, a second from Commissioner Bremner. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
That was on the permit. Sorry.
How about a posed then? Good. Thank you.
And for the petitioner's information, so this will go to council on Monday. What day is Monday? Today's the-
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, correct.
Sixteenth, yeah.
Monday, so this coming Monday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
The last item on our listener agenda is an is a discussion of interim use permits to review a proposed ordinance.
This is something that I, Mr. Byram and I have discussed a little bit, and it's just the the time that I've been here the last year, we've had instances where things have come up. Obviously, there's lots of questions about how our ordinances are written and how they are effective, and this is one area where I think that we have some room for for growth. The interim use permit would be helpful in instances where we have, and it says in the purpose here, "To allow a use for a limited period of time that reasonably utilizes the property or is not reasonable to utilize it in the manner provided in the comprehensive plan, and to allow use that is presently acceptable but that with anticipated development will not be acceptable in the future." And then further down, it indicates that the interim you should conform to the zoning regulations, except that the city council may waive the ordinance provisions upon a finding that the temporary nature of the interim use would eliminate the adverse effects the provision was intended to prevent. So a couple of instances, these are some instances, real-life instances, that have come through my office where I had a lady come in who wanted to start her own business in making baked goods and to provide them to places like Super Fresh and restaurants and places like that in town where she wouldn't be directly doing the sales, but would sell them to another business. And for that effort, she couldn't afford to necessarily invest in a commercial kitchen on her own, and so she was looking at potentially using like a commercial kitchen here in town, like at a church that a church had. And in our residential districts, it would be difficult to do that. It's not a conditional, you know, like the the baking in a church doesn't necessarily work very well with how our ordinance scheme is, and our conditional use permit schemes are are developed. The conditional use also is a permanent use that goes with the land, so it wouldn't really make sense to have a church get a conditional use permit for that kind of use that was only going to be a temporary temporary thing. And I think in this instance, that may that use may have also been donated to that individual just to help them get started in their business. Another instance would be, we do have a gravel pit in town. I don't know if any of you have come across that issue, but that has been permitted as a conditional use with a time limit. However, under our state statute, we really can't do that. It would have to be an interim use permit. The conditional use can expire if it's not used for a certain period of time, but in order to have a fixed time limit, it has to be an interim use permit, which is what we would probably want for a use like that in the city. Another possible instance would be, we have now the Latino Economic Development Corporation doing some urban agriculture here. It's currently a gardening area over by Woodson. If that use were to expand in the city somewhere appropriate, but maybe we wouldn't want it there forever, maybe that use that land could be developed for something else in the future, we might want to have a time limit on that use or allow that interim use. So those are some some considerations that that I have come across, some things that I've been grappling with, trying to come up with a solution that would be good for the city of Austin. And I just would ask for you to make some comments, or if you have any questions.
Do you think it'd be good to form a committee?
For this particular, you know, it might actually, maybe we wouldn't have to meet many times, but maybe to look at whether we want to have, you know, the ordinance written like this, or whether it should include specific examples of what would be appropriate for interim uses in each zone, or how we want to incorporate that into our land use plan. I think that would be fine if I, yeah, I don't I don't know, I don't want to violate the public meeting laws by sending out emails to everybody, but if we could maybe, you think a committee of the planning commission or?
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
I don't think that would violate anything, because we've had meetings before on other things.
Opinion, council?
Once you get to a quorum, it becomes a public meeting, and that just means that you you post notice that the committee's meeting, and I guess if the public were interested in watching you guys discuss interim use permits, that wouldn't be a horrible result.
I'm just thinking that if a committee of some of us or whatever would get together in the room over there and then make the recommendation to the planning commission.
Sure.
Holly, and I can certainly look at what the number would be to, you know, not trigger the, you know, the formal meeting requirements, and certainly, whatever the result is of your work would come back to a public meeting, then be discussed, so no action, no official action would take place at the committee meeting. So I think we could make that work if people were interested in doing that.
The the alternative would be to just post it?
Yes.
And then any number of us can show up, as long as it was publicly posted?
Yes.
Correct.
Three days' notice, something like that?
Yes.
So I just want to check my understanding. This is a tool that we could incorporate into our ordinances to give more flexibility to allow certain uses, and just like a conditional use permit, each one of these interim use permits would come to a council or commission for review every time.
Correct, and then you would do the analysis that's required in the ordinance to determine whether it would adversely affect the area where it was proposed, and the same kind of analysis that you do for a typical conditional use permit.
And I'm assuming that you pulled this language from another community that already developed the concept?
There are many, many, many different versions of the interim use permits, but this one most this one most closely matched the statutory language, which, of course, I like. And and it did, I did like the the signed statement agreeing to certain things. That was an addition that this particular ordinance had, that everybody's on the same page as to what your future expectations would be for an interim use permit versus like a conditional use permit, if there was any confusion about that. So, yeah, I did a little, yes, this is from another city. I redid it a little bit, modified it a little bit for us, but it included all the things that I really liked. But certainly, we could pull more from other communities and review them and talk about them. A lot of counties have adopted the interim use permits as well, because they typically have those more intensive uses, like maybe a waste management facility or a or gravel pit or some kind of mining operation. But, yeah, I was thinking more a little more creatively about some of the entrepreneurial efforts that people are trying to do in the city and how costly that can be and what a big risk it can be, and maybe we could minimize some of that risk by allowing a little bit more.
So are you saying this would make Austin more business-friendly? Is that what you're saying?
I think, yes, that's what I'm trying to say. So then we would agree that a committee will investigate, I'll have, talk to Mr. Byram about investigating, getting committee together, if that's-
Does that sound good to everyone?
Is anybody interested in being on a committee? Okay, I'll contact you.
I like the work that you've done. I like the work you've done here. I think I'd be comfortable going with that.
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, that's an option as well.
Is a time is a time parameter part of the, or was this kind of quick?
No, I would just like to have, you know, I would just like to try to get something in by spring, you know, when, I don't know, I think it'd be nice to have something in the next couple, few months, or whatever you want to say.
Were you asking about if the actual permit, every permit would have an expiration date, right? On an interim use, you'd automatically have a deadline.
We have a deadline of sorts.
Yeah.
It's up to five years.
Yeah, maximum of five years, and I saw that some of the fees could be staggered in a way that you got an interim use permit for up to five years, but if it if you used it for less time, part of the fee could be refunded, although that might be a difficult option, but.
It's better to stagger the fee based on the date you canceled the conditional use permit.
Right.
And if they have to come back for more time, then they got to pay another fee.
Right. And that's, some communities do that, too. If they want to renew it every year, they just pay a pay the additional fee, and but they'd have to also have a review.
Maybe we should ask how many of the commissioners would be interested in in participating and actually forming this committee is out kind of our question to kind of decide if that's-
Yeah, it sounds like that, yeah.
Unless we're just okay with it.
That's unless-
Right, so that's the two questions.
Yeah, but I would add that I was at the workshop last week in Little Falls for Planning Commission, and this was one of the topics that was discussed. There was about 40 or 50 people there from probably 30 different municipalities and counties around the state, and those that had this in place were pretty adamant that this is an arrow that you need in the quiver as a planning commission to do good work. So it was pretty-
Good information.
It's being used around the state by a lot of places, so, I mean, if it doesn't fit a particular applicant, we don't use it, but to have it available, I think, is could only be good.
And I agree, I think it should be pretty conservatively applied, that, you know, just like a like a variance or anything else, we're not just giving it out to anyone and-
What were you looking for tonight? I think you were looking just for some general discussion and feedback about whether this is something that should be pursued.
Correct.
You do have a text here, if anybody saw anything in the text that raised issues, or if anyone thought that there were aspects of this that needed to be further studied or reviewed, then that would be a decision about whether to do that as a committee or as the body as a whole. So instead of first asking if people want to be on the committee, I think the first question ought to be, is there a sense that the group either generally approves of this or wants to leave it in Holly's hands and encourage her to pursue it further, or whether people think there needs to be more work?
And I won't say that personally. I think that everybody has very good comments and and suggestions.
It definitely sounds, just hearing the discussion, it sounds like it's a valuable, I think it would be a good thing to have, especially in light of Mr. Lutz's, you know, what he heard. So I would be in favor of, you know, using it, and whether it is complete, I guess, as we review it, does anybody have any comments on that? Is, I mean, I guess, yeah, we're just asking if if it's, we want to let Holly go with it and and back her in that.
I could always further develop it and bring it back, or?
Yeah, I definitely think you should just take the ball and run with it.
Okay.
I agree.
So is this going to require, of course, the planning commission has to be the first approval. I assume it has to go before the city council for acceptance twice, or?
Correct. Unless it's a unanimous approval, then it only takes one meeting for it to go through.
Is it in its final stage right now?
I would have Mr. Byram's office review it before I submitted it to the council, but, yeah, this is, this is, I like this particular ordinance. But if you but if you did want further, you know, further ordinances or anything else compared to, you know, I'd be happy to provide that. And I will bring it to the work session with the city council as well for them to review, so if they have additional questions or want more information, I can do that there as well.
Will it come to this group in a final form first, then?
Um, yes, I can do that.
Just as a, I mean, it may be the same.
If there's any changes, right? Yep, I can do that.
Seems like the best thing we can do is get out of your way.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Is it also already properly annotated for insertion, numbering and everything?
I did, yeah. I numbered it how I wanted it, yeah.
For disclosure, my office has not been asked to review this to make sure that it's in final form. It certainly, in a quick read through it, looked like it could, it's pretty close to being able to be inserted if if this was the language. I think that one area of feedback, and she alluded to this earlier, is this draft or this version is pretty open-ended, and it would allow a tremendous amount of flexibility for this planning commission to take a look at each case on a case-by-case basis and decide duration and, you know, limits and things consistent with that particular use in whatever location it's in. There are other versions of these sorts of things that are much like our conditional use system, where each zoning area has listed things that could be interim uses, and then you're now tied to just those listed uses and really can't go beyond that. So if something comes up that wasn't predicted, you have your hands tied a bit. However, that gives you some cover to be able to say no then, too, because you can say it's not in the ordinance. We're here with an ordinance like- We're here, with an ordinance like this, it's pretty open-ended, and you're going to have to have the courage to say no in those appropriate cases, because you won't be able to say, "We can't. Our ordinance doesn't allow it." You'll have to make those judgment calls. So that is, I think, probably one of the more important questions from a policy standpoint is, do we want to be a city that has interim uses that are pretty open and flexible, and allow us to respond to changing and new things? Or do we want to try to predict those things that we would consider, you know, welcome in each zoning category, and make a list of those things, like conditional uses are done? I'm not going to tell you which way I'm leaning, but that's an important feedback, because this is the most flexible side.
It seems to me that the whole nature of the interim permits is going to be out of the box, things we might not have anticipated, so I would think in this case, leaving it more flexible is the right way to go.
I would agree. I think that we can maybe anticipate everything, so to try and define it ahead of time might be difficult, and so I like that idea as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll hand it back to you.
Any other thing for us tonight on our...
I have nothing further. Do you have a comment?
I have a question, which is, I certainly was surprised to find out that you're not allowed to attach a tree... a sign to a tree. Is that something that if we, as a commission, feel needs to get changed, we can recommend to the city council to change the ordinance? What's the process?
Yeah, I mean, that's just the... Initially, I did think... That's why it was in the initial application. I thought they could get a variance on that issue, but then further reviewing the sign ordinance, because, I mean, there are lots of things that you can put up in any district, you know, like historical signs and identifying buildings, but in this instance, there's another little provision that said unlawful signs, or unlawful... Yeah, unlawful signs, and then it listed, like, you know, just a string of things, and a tree just happened to be in there, and I saw it, and I called our attorney and said, "Do I even bring that to the planning commission?" And they recommended not to do it, because it's... Says it's unlawful, so I didn't want you to have to... Yeah, I didn't... I guess, go ahead and...
Yeah, to answer Commissioner Holly's question, if the planning commission believes that there's an issue with the ordinance, and you question whether the ordinance makes any sense at all, you can ask the staff to look into it, bring back recommended changes, and they can go through the process, just like this interim use goes through the process. And so it'd come back to you for a change, or it might come back to you with the recommendation of staff that, no, there's really good reasons why we don't want to change that, and then once it got past you, it would then go to council to be approved. So, for instance, I've said, if you find that you're granting a variance on a particular item just repetitively, maybe it's time for the planning commission to say, "Why do we have that in the ordinance anymore if we're going to grant a variance on it every time?" And that would be a good place for that feedback. That is part of the purpose of the planning commission, to provide that sort of grassroots feedback on, "We're not sure that this is the right thing." You don't have final say on it, but you're certainly a valued voice in that discussion.
And I do... I always think about, what is the purpose? And I'm not entirely sure what the purpose was with trees, if maybe people were, you know, placing signs on trees that didn't belong to them, or weren't on their property, or... But I'm not entirely sure why that was included. It would be pretty simple to omit it, but we just had this one instance where somebody requested to put a sign on a tree, so I don't, you know... I guess if it seems like an issue that should be addressed, I can certainly bring it forward. I just need to explain why I think it should be omitted, or why it shouldn't be, I guess. I don't have an opinion at this point, strongly one way or the other.
Well, it's in the upper part of that thing I was looking at tonight, which is, what was that part requiring? I mean, it seemed like you said we could have... we could have put it on the tree if it wasn't for the second section that said it was unlawful. So why is the first section there?
Yeah, there's... Well, there's... There's a whole lot of sections that lead up to that second section, and all the ones that are in front of it say, "Sign should be this, sign should be that, they're restricted to this number, they're restricted to this size." So it's tailoring signs. Then at the end, there's just a section that says, sort of, "The following signs are unlawful," which, to the city attorney's office, and really Holly came to the same conclusion, that is there... It's sort of... On its first review, it looks duplicative, and so we always think, well, why would they have it in two places? You can't have signs located in these places, and one, and another place where it says it's just unlawful to have that sign. And our interpretation was that that second section is just a pure statement that says, "Under no circumstances will these types of locations be approved."
So in other words, you can't grant a variance for this specific...
Right. That was our conclusion, that the ones that are listed in that section that says, "These are unlawful," it's no longer... It's our recommendation that we not have this type of sign, but if you think otherwise, you can make a different decision. It's a statement that these are just so bad, we're not going to allow them.
And then I...
I don't know who, you know, how each of the different types of signs that are included in the unlawful section, how those were selected. I don't know the discussion or debate, if any, that occurred at the time that ordinance was adopted. I don't know if any of this has to do with being certified as a tree city, or any of those sorts of historical things that have happened. I don't know if there was a push for people who didn't think it was healthy for trees. I don't know, and that would be the question, that if you wanted to pursue it, staff in the council's office would look into it and try to figure out if there's a really good explanation for that, so we could explain that at a future meeting, or if not, we could present a proposed amendment.
And I am already thinking about all the complications, like what diameter tree, and is there kind of variety tree, and how heavy could the sign be, and how big could it be, and, you know, so there would be other things that would become involved if trees were allowed, I guess, but certainly, we could look into that if that is...
I think we're barking up the wrong tree.
I was only pushing the issue, because this morning, when I spoke to the director of the formal house, she would like to have... She told me she would like to leave the one on the tree and put the other one on a post, so that's why I was pushing it. Somewhere, it looks like, after I talked to her this morning, she changed her mind about it, and so I was fine with going with what she wanted to do. I think with everyone else, we don't need to change that. It looks great on the tree right there, and the tree looks nice and everything, and it's a big, healthy tree. I don't think I probably hurt it, but, like you said, we'd be getting a real mess.
All right, I have nothing further.
Okay, if there's nothing else, or else...
I have a quick question.
Oh, yes.
I had somebody inquire of me, so I wanted to ask since this subject came up before the planning commission some time ago. What is the status of the city or the HRA's request for grant money for the apartment complex out in the Fox Point area?
I would recommend that you talk to the HRA.
Okay.
I know that the grant was denied. It was... They did not receive the grant, but I don't know any of the details of how they want to proceed, or what their plans are, so I would just... I would talk to the HRA directly.
Anything else? I've got her ask for motion to adjourn.
So, Lutz.
Motion to adjourn, Commissioner Bremner, second.
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Lutz. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.